Go ahead and start.
We have a call, we have people online too.
Yes, we do. I believe we have one more member online, one still planning to join us. Good afternoon, and welcome to the University 2023, which is Holly and Big Board of Trustees Meeting. I'm Sarah Gidding, I'm here at Property Section Manager, and with that, begin with both of all. We have Alex DeBarra, Gary Schmidt, Jerome DeSoto, and Wes Galen. I believe we had Kim O'Malley, not yet, and we have Lucas Johnson.
Here.
Thank you, and Marge will not be joining us today. At the board's request, at our previous meeting, we have made a couple of changes to our agenda flow today. And so we have added a consent agenda that contains the minutes for approval from the previous meeting, as well as a staff administrative activity report. And so that will be a monthly item that we include in the agenda packet and distribute for the board to see what we have been working on throughout the months between meetings. And so the board would be welcome with the consent agenda to either approve as presented or to pull particular items off if there is need for discussion or approval separately.
Everybody had a chance to review minutes and the staff administrating report. And if we've all had any questions or comments on either minutes or the report? No, I asked for a motion to approve minutes and the board report. Second it. We'll move Alex, second Jerome. All in favor say aye. Aye.
All opposed. Same time. It sounds like motion carries five zero. I wanted to begin this afternoon with an acquisition update. We've had several parcels that we have been reviewing, and so far, many of the parcels we've looked into have not been feasible projects. But we did want to give the board an update on a multifamily property we have been working with for the past several months. Sally Stanning is potentially running late to the meeting today. She may be able to provide some additional details when she gets here. But the staff has been reviewing a potential donation of a multifamily apartment complex that currently has 23 units. This is a former hotel that has been, was converted into apartment complexes through a multi-agency effort, I believe in 2005. There are still tax credit restrictions for the coming 15, 20, 25 years. And so we're still trying to find out exactly where we fit within that obligation to the tax credits previously used. But as we've done our analysis, we did do a structural review by structural engineer. We expect that out with staff estimates coming between 100 and 150,000 for structural work that would be needed. And we also would be looking at potentially some make-ready cosmetic work such as carpet, paint, ADA considerations in some units and things like that, that we would estimate between 5 and 10,000 per apartment. Next month, it is our hope to bring all of this together in one proposal packet to the board. And at that point in time, we would be comfortable naming the address and sharing pictures and far more details on this location. But I did want to let the board know this is still in process. My director Sally Stanning has reviewed it with city management. And at this point in time, based on analysis so far, city management is comfortable with us continuing to pursue this as a potential acquisition. In the coming months, staff also will begin exploring potential disposition opportunities for the property to align with the land bank goal that before acquisition, we would have potential disposition strategies. And so we will talk at that point in time in more detail about funding resources that could be used for the work, about practical opportunities, and about any potential end users that would be identified between now and next month. With that, I would be glad to see any further questions or additional details that the board would like to see when we bring that next month.
I do have one quick question.
Sure.
I know that the board had passed on the lot on Greenwood, but I was given the seller's information, and she wanted me to ask the board a quick question to make sure they were completely solid on passing on the opportunity. She said that the city gave her a variance, that she was able to build a 20-foot structure instead of, I believe the easements only gave her 13 feet, but she said she did have that variance. And with that variance, were they, were they still interested? And I told her I would bring that up to the board today with today's meeting.
Thank you.
That's the property that we talked about with the garage on it?
Yes, definitely, it's South Greenwood.
I don't think there's a whole lot to do with it, with the 20-foot. But, I mean, I just think that's too restrictive even.
Yeah, I agree.
I think for the staff analysis, we had thought we were actually looking at a different piece of property than what we found out we were actually looking at. But that actual property was fenced and directly proximate to an existing structure. So that wouldn't be a very tight bill based on the visuals that we saw.
Just from the discussion we've had, I don't see any reason to spend a whole lot of time on that because we came to the conclusion that the neighbors needed to get together to talk about what the options were, how they could utilize that property to the best, but it really didn't fit in this program, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, that I could be truthful with her, that I had the conversation, and when I call her back to let her know that that was the decision of the board.
Anybody have any other questions or any thoughts, comments? No, we'll let the previous discussion stand.
Thank you so much for following up on that, Lucas, bringing that back to the board. If there are no further questions, I wanted to also share on just ongoing item updates. And so we will see less and less of this as we really flush out that administrative acting report. But we wanted to bring back and just share that we have distributed the development application. In doing that, we tried to pull together several resources that we thought would be helpful for potential developers. We know that there are some who have been longstanding partners with housing and community services programs, as well as others that have expressed interest but have never really encountered community development block grants and other sort of funding restrictions. And so we have, I sent out an email yesterday that included the development application information, property information sheets for each of the properties, and then also just kind of a brief description of what eligible projects are, and an invitation for anyone who has questions to reach out to either myself or Lance. The list of individuals that we distributed to does include entities that had been interested when we first vetted, interest, as well as a number of other individuals who, from our public housing sale, about list development, have also expressed interest in development activities. And so with that, they will receive land bank opportunities, as well as opportunities through some of the other more complex programs that we have for developers. And so I look forward to giving a status update next month that hopefully has some level of interest and hopefully some applications in process. With that, I will turn it over to Lance to discuss staff priorities.
Thank you, Sarah. Last month's meeting, we brought a list of staff priorities to the board and asked for assistance in pushing these out and maybe prioritizing them. And in return, you asked us to set the priorities ourselves and in the manner that we thought that they deserved attention. Sarah and I sat down and we did some long-range planning and we came up with a list and a schedule. And I believe that list is in your packet here today. But in brief summary, in the fourth quarter of this year, we had approved the development application, which you did last month, market the ninth Nash Properties and seek development agreement with CDBG eligible outcomes, which we're hoping to bring to you next month. Complete marketing materials, I have started on some marketing materials with the city's graphic design department, which I'll speak to a little bit, but we hope to have you something in December to look at, as well as a neighborhood engagement strategy with our target areas. And we followed up last month on neighborhood feedback from our spring community engagement presentations. And we are in this to plan in the joint board workshop with the Affordable Housing Review Board and your board. Not sure if we're at a place where we can update that too much, but so I'll let Sarah jump in here.
I'm glad to share on that. Originally, we were targeting December. And as I started looking at potential guest calendars, December was already booking up quickly. So I have reached out to both Gary, as our board chair here, and then our board chair with the Affordable Housing Review Board, with two potential dates in early January. Tentatively, we're looking at either January 4th or January 11th. I believe that one date had a preference for one board chair, but ultimately, some of that will be guided by availability of proposed speakers. We've got one in the room right at the moment, and then we'll be reaching out to a couple others, and just confirming that those dates do work for them. Once we have speakers confirmed, we will be tightening up timeframes, trying to provide content ideas, and really looking for some of the details that this board had asked for last time. And so it's my hope that when, in December, we would have a fairly firmed-up plan for what that meeting would look like. And then something that had been requested was also to potentially look at some networking time before or after, just time for the boards to meet each other, time to ask questions of staff. And so we will be looking at that as we request people's time.
Do we find out who's on the Affordable Housing Review Board? Is that?
Absolutely.
On the city website?
Yeah, I can send a link to the specific board. We have one member in the room right now.
And so similar to this board, the composition of that board is one appointee per council member and mayor. So one per district and one for the mayor. We actually lost one member of this board to the Affordable Housing Review Board and gained Lucas in her place. And so I think you'll see a similarly good group of professionals who really represent the businesses and industries involved in that decision-making, bringing their knowledge from their individual arenas. So I look forward to this. It takes a little time to get all the coordinations together, but I think it's going to be an exciting chance to really talk about the bigger picture of housing affordability, as well as the slice that we do, which is affordable housing. And then some of the frameworks that we operate within, the Places for People Plan, the code enforcement, and how that all interfaces with the work.
Thanks, Sarah. Another big piece that we've been working through throughout the year, and you expressed to us that it was an important part of going forward, is the tax, the Cedric County Tax Sale Data Analysis and the storytelling we derive from it. That's a big piece, a lot of data entry. And right now, we think we can deliver that January 24. So we're excited about that. We've got staff working on that. And then we've got an ongoing section, which includes potentially potential property acquisitions, relationship building with professional groups in the real estate industry, and advocacy strategies for identifying other funding mechanisms or, for clarity, some impediments that we have to fund.
The Cedric County Tax Sale. I think that's going to be legislative issue that we'll have to. Is that something that? Do we need to be working on that now in order to get into the city's legislative agenda? Or is that something we could add after January 1st?
So Troy Anderson, Assistant City Commander, City Commander jobs. I would say the answer is yes and yes. Yes. Obviously, if you all have that recommendation coming out of this body now, I think we run that up the flagpole, so to speak, and see if we can incorporate it, if there's an appetite by city council to incorporate it into legislative agenda for the city. But then also, yes, if we have to wait until after January, we can certainly do that as well.
Because my question to staff is, what do you think that's going to look like? Do you have any idea what our recommendations are going to be? How to change or do tax sale differently in order to find a benefit to the city and the county and the school district?
Jeff and I have been discussing that. And I will say, yeah, Jeff is online here. We actually do have a section dedicated and just a couple agenda items. I will say that one of the recommendations, as we worked with our strategic communications, who works within the lobbying arena, was to wait until yesterday's elections because the, those who are elected really do determine the political priorities. And we want to make sure that anything that we're doing is blessed by that current administration and in line with their priorities. I will say that we're working, I am assigning all that data input to others within our department who have a little bit more capacity between, say, frontline clerk tasks and things like that, just to be able to get it done. We do have our preliminary analysis, and I know there is interest in that at the council level. And so I think with assigning this out to some of our clerks, we actually will get it done more quickly than trying to do it with this particular staff team. And so at Troy's recommendation, yes, we will be moving the storyline part forward, but we won't necessarily have the full final data set until a little bit later.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Question, storyline, data part, that's exciting. It's assuming that that is basically stating the accomplish goal is.
Yes.
The other data is how you get to that point.
And so some.
What needs to be done to get to that?
Some of the data we've been working on is really. So we've been looking at a 10-year data set.
I think it's kind of workable. That's the problem.
Yeah, and truly, I, it is a unique situation that we're in, that we have a county that doesn't see that as a mutual interest. So part of our advocacy is really looking at funding sources to do due diligence because if we're even considering something that is, that we would be taking in, we need to know if it is eligible for our CDBG funding source. And so we've got kind of the internal component here with the city. We have an external component to convince Cedric County that this is good for everybody, that this is just, this is an opportunity to make that difference. This is good for tax rules, and I have my PowerPoint here in a couple moments. I'm operating off script at the moment. And then we have the legislative component to say, the tax sales system has gaps, and we need to write tighter legislation to fill those gaps. And again, within that, there is really a strong do-no-harm component. You don't want to mess up any other land banks that are operating smoothly. We just want to participate too.
Your mind, or is it, we do? Is it a goal to get something introduced to the legislature this year, by the legislature this year to deal with something?
Internally to staff, yes, but ultimately, it really depends on the council and priorities and whether they see that as something that they're willing to move forward as well.
Communicate it whether there's an interest in our council or some person perhaps, something to talk about. Can you say who that is?
I don't know if I can at the moment.
So let me, maybe if I can help add some color, right? So obviously, staff can make recommendations on what they see as best practice across the nation, across the state. If, how, and then if this body makes a recommendation to city council, that city council take up whatever amendments might be necessary at the state level. If the city council picks that up and incorporates that into their legislative agenda, then they can start utilizing that in conversations with representatives. If there's an appetite at the state level, then with representatives, then we can start talking about what a legislative amendment might look like. But the storyline analysis kind of feeds into, also, here's the data. Here's what we've seen at tax sale over the last five years. We have five-year tax sale data, right? So we're going to come at it from, not only this is not just anecdotal, right? But this is data-driven. Here's our analysis. Here's best practice. Here's where we think that you should go with this. And then that will lead the conversation of, if council picks it up, yes, we want to incorporate that into our legislative agenda. And we can start having conversations with representatives.
Actually, if the board would allow, I could go ahead and jump ahead to the advocacy strategy. I'll share some of the concepts that Jeff and I have worked with and then see if Jeff wants to fill in anything else around the edges on his work. And so really, Jeff has been working through it. You know, he's done a great job of just pining things down. Some of the goals of this strategy, first, we were looking for diversified funding for this land bank project. We're running up against the challenges of sole funding source. And so that is internal to this organization, but it's also external with partners. Identify, would there be any partners, private industry, nonprofits, anybody else, who would help to advance this through monetary funding? Also, we're looking at the ability to acquire at tax sale. And ideally, to get clear title out of tax sale would really be the ideal if, when we take a property in, if we don't have to sit and wait for a year, up to 15 years for that. We are working on a memo, and that has been under development, again, pending the election results from yesterday's election, because we know that that's going to, we're going to need to tell that story somewhat differently based on election outcomes. And so I did want to share a few story points that we're working with. First, one of the opportunities I had was to look back through 13 properties that were built with housing development loan programs, single-family home funds. And I looked at builds that were, I believe, approved in 2021. And these were all builds that started with vacant lots and ended with a whole new affordable housing unit. And these are primarily in the Northeast neighborhoods. And so the 13 properties aggregated together, I've seen that the taxes on those lots were an average of 3304 prior to build, when they were simply vacant lots. And once they were fully approved, two years later, catch that middle year, you have structures under construction and some weird results. But two years later, those taxes being paid were 1,05687 on average, and that's a 32 times impact for the tax rolls. That's huge in terms of jumping ahead, allowing properties to generate their fair share of tax revenue to pay for public services. It utilizes existing infrastructure, which is an impediment to affordable housing development in new arenas. So when you have to put in your utilities, your water lines, your streets, sewers, things like that, that is expensive. And that's often allocated in the form of specials, which are paid with interest over the next, used to be 15 years, keeps on edging up, 20. Wouldn't be surprised if we see more because that's, it's costly to pay out. And so when you can use the existing resources, you're actually getting better utilization as well as cutting your costs. Also, we had an Affordable Housing Review Board meeting, I believe nine days ago, and we heard presentations from two potential developer applicants. And in their presentation, Habitat for Humanity, said they actually analyzed data for police calls in their rock the block area that they developed. From the time that they did some of their first home builds in that area, which is also our focus area, they noticed a very strong correlation in decreasing police calls as they built more of those in that area. And so I think especially knowing that our presumed mayor-elect is very focused on public safety, those are the types of storylines we're really going to be working to understand and develop in internal advocacy, which is a prerequisite to external advocacy. Jeff, if you're on the call, you have, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I want to add one thing, just to kind of add to this. I think what Mr. Anderson and Sarah, you said, has covered the majority of it. The one thing I was looking at is, when we come into a tax sale, our disadvantage in bidding, we have to, under current scenario, we have to come in with the cash available to pay off all the taxes. And what I would propose would be a form of a credit bid that the land bank would be able to come in and bid the amount of taxes due on the property. If we're outbid, great. I mean, that means all the taxes have been paid, and somebody's probably very interested in developing the property. If not, then we would be able to obtain title to the property without actually tendering cash because we were able to show the benefit of the land bank's purchase of property. We do this on a select item, so we wouldn't have to buy all the properties that didn't sell, just the ones that we put a bid in on. And, you know, so we're showing, you know, I'm putting together this memo. I talked to Jim Jonas at the city, and he suggested this format where it's kind of a short explanation of what a land bank is, what it does, what are their problems are, what the goal would be. And then we're adding, and Sarah's come up with this great information, showing the benefit of the land bank actually purchasing property, what we can do to turn that around. And then at that point, you know, we'll, we'd probably go forward with making a recommendation from this board to the city council to, for support of it being on the legislative agenda. Then our lobbyists would go around and kind of tip their toe in the water and find out, you know, are they getting support from other entities, you know, and kind of where that would land. We don't have any, I don't have any feel for that, but it, you know, they're the experts in that particular area.
Thanks, Jeff.
And Jeff has done a lot of the legwork, really getting that strategy together. And I've been trying to fill in with data. And it's interesting, just as we navigate forward, again, the final point on the screen about Habitat for Humanity, that just came up in a meeting last week. But this is part of that continuum, that if we can acquire properties through the land bank, the goal and hope would be that they could be developed as affordable housing and meet that need. And so again, now that, now that elections have been conducted yesterday, I expect that we'll be able to tighten this up quite a bit in the next month and bring a much more informed strategy, strategy, as well as more defined story points. And we do want to use a number of different story points because we know that different things are going to really resonate with different people. But ultimately, the goal is to, one way or another, whether it's through local advocacy, through statewide advocacy, to build that bridge so that we can have a primary pipeline through the tax sale. I think within the staff report, we are working to build secondary pipelines. There could be a slow trickle of properties through different avenues, like real estate agents, title companies might be aware, estates, but that is certainly not the way that most land banks scale.
Questions on that topic? Is the advocacy strategy, will it just be refined and presented back to us next month?
Yes, and I will say Jeff and I have had some conversations about just the nature of that presentation. And there are some things that we would like to basically scale within it to say, here are the ideal outcomes, here are the secondary outcomes. It may be difficult to present all the details in open meeting because there are, there, there are higher priority wins and there are like backup solutions. So we are discussing how best to present that, but we certainly will give an overview to this meeting and through the whole open meetings process as well. Back to where we were. Thank you, Lance.
Yeah. Before we leave the discussion of staff priorities, are there any questions, concerns? Anything that you would like to reorder? Or you think they're, they fall in line with the board's goals?
Anybody else?
This is good. Thank you, Lance.
Going forward, our intention with the priorities would be to bring back the affordables, probably the final quarter of each year. And then also to be continually building this out. We may have things that go kind of on the waitlist and then proposed assignments. We might bring it back for quarterly review. But we want this to be a living and active document that guides our, especially Lance's work, but then also comes back to the board. So you celebrate successes and take those off the list. And then to determine what needs to go on for the coming quarter or future opportunities.
Well, I think it might be like, I was just thinking, approved development application, we did that. Maybe put an X by that one. One that you're working on slash or something, just so we can identify, okay, good, you got those done already. Just a thought.
I will do that. Thank you. It's like the next item is Realtor and Professional Group Outreach. Sarah and I visited the Realtors of South Central Kansas government committee meeting on October 18th. Presented an overview of the land bank, the Affordable Housing Fund, and the public housing disposition. And as we previously discussed, it was more or less a door opener for us to get involved with them. Wes, your staff was very gracious getting us set up. So for that, we thank you. It was a, they were very engaged, asked a lot of good questions. And in all candor, they really engaged in the part about the public housing disposition. Go figure, a bunch of Realtors wanted to know about the houses we were selling, so.
One question too.
Yes.
Of course. We just got a lot of questions.
We did answer a lot of questions, but the main thing that we came away with was an invitation to come back. When we did have an advocacy strategy put together and pretty much a commitment to helping us further those efforts. So all in all, I'd say it was a very productive meeting. I'm efforting to do the same thing with different members of the legal community, title, title companies. It's a little more complex about targeting the right groups of people. But hopefully, we'll have some accomplishments to share with you there in the coming days. And hand in hand with that, I'm, I'm also working on print media collateral. I'm working with the city's graphic design people to create basically three different pieces to target it to three different groups. One is to the general public, kind of a who we are, what we do and how we can help. Another directed to associated industries like real estate, law, title work, things like that, that basically says how we can help you or your clients. And the last is targeted to homeowners with problem properties. And this is basically how we can help you get out from under a sticky situation with your property. So that's the beginning of our collateral campaign. And I should have something to show to you next month at least to, to look at. And the last thing I want to report on is I attended a community garden training. And more or less, it was a contract and organizational training session that talked about how, in particular, the city of Houston has used community gardens to address food deserts and properties that were not able to, that were not buildable. And they, they've gotten into pretty good detail about, not necessarily how to set them up, but how to contract with organizations to operate those. And so that was, that was very informative and maybe something we can do down the road should that opportunity present itself.
I would add that that could be helpful, really on a couple of different arenas. You know, so our primary focus is affordable housing. We also know that if we're able to acquire a property that takes time to untangle title work, right, right at the moment, the way we're set up, we would just be mowing and maintaining that property. And so to look at, would there be any potential uses while we're trying to hold property? The other helpful part of that is just understanding the contract negotiation components of, we're more used to doing housing contracts, but to see.
Can't plant that.
That I'm aware of. We have had some conversation and it's been several months, but there is a sustainability board and staff that are looking at sustainable efforts. I think one thing Lance had told me he took from this training is that we don't want to be the community garden manager. We want to ensure that that management duty is contracted to another industry. Water would be another consideration. And so just understanding how do we protect the land bank's interests if we were to negotiate intermediate contracts or contracts with community benefit that warrant housing?
There are some of those around town already, is there not?
There are a few nonprofit organizations that operate, they're kind of neighborhood localized. I think there's one down in South Wichita. There's one in Northeast Wichita. And then something that the park board has considered as well. I know specifically, most recently in Riverside, at the potential of having a community garden space. But again, parks isn't interested in maintaining that. They want to find an organization to kind of manage that for them.
Be worth it to taxes and these organizations to see.
Yeah, if there'd be interest.
And so that could be a holding strategy that offers a productive and community benefit use if we saw a property at a garden as well. And I know it takes more than a year to get one set up. So it's probably not a quick turnaround strategy. But if we looked at something that might take a little bit to be able to add that as a benefit.
Interesting.
So I think we're also looking at a lot of opportunities for trainings, for ideas. We're still in the early stages of what the land bank could be. I think I have one, a training lined up that I plan to attend on working with legislators. And while that probably won't be our staff's direct, we won't be directly interfacing, even just attending that training and understanding how best to equip the staff who do for this conversation. So we are always looking for learning opportunities like that.
Who represents the city now as their lobbyist?
Not sure I'm not.
I mean, there's a separate. Yeah, there's a federal, I think.
Federal.
Yeah, and then there's a local.
Jason's almost saying city and county.
That our coordination would be through strategic communications for that. And so I think we are on to other business and open discussion. Is there any other business or open discussion today? One question I had for the board is that we are getting toward the end of the, toward the end of the year. And I tend to reserve this room a year at a time. And so I wanted to confirm going into the coming year, whether the board would want to continue meeting at the same time and date or if the board has any interest in looking at changing dates and times.
I want to leave it the same. Give it its time.
It's nice and easy because they already kind of have that standing spot. But that allows me to go ahead and set up at least proposed meeting dates for the coming year. And that we can move as necessary, we can cancel as necessary. But it's much easier to have it standing as a reservation than to try to add it later.
Good.
Yeah.
Other comments, thoughts? Now I move for motion to adjutant. Thank you. Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say a sign. Next meeting, December 13th, 1:30 right here. Thank you, staff. Thank you, board members. Have a great day.